I will open the Board of Selectmen's meeting for the town of West Bridgewater. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be aware that this meeting is being recorded for use on the internet and on our local cable station. I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, specifically the clerical union, and for purposes of discussing strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the DPW director. Since, in my opinion as chair, strategizing in open session would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town, the board will reconvene into open session at the completion of executive session. Roll call vote.
Ryan, yes.
Raise yes. We are now entering into executive session. Six thirty-five and we will resume back into open session. First on the agenda is reorganization of the board. I'd like to postpone this to our next meeting. We were surprised and both disappointed by the resignation of Anthony Kinahan. I think we should send a letter to Anthony thanking his for, thanking him for his service. I can't think of a better person to represent the town of West Bridgewater. And it was my pleasure serving with him and learning from him. I'm really disappointed that he's leaving us and I think it's a big loss for this town.
I agree. So, you will be missed.
Greatly.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'd like to say the same thing. I mean, obviously, I had personal business today. I wasn't in the office and I found out later than most. But, um, but you were, I've worked in three towns, Anthony. You are in excellent selectmen. You always represented the town well. People have no idea, all of you, how much work selectmen do behind the scenes. It always amazed me because people would always say he doesn't say a lot or speak a lot. But the truth of the matter is that I would, as you know, I go over the agendas with everybody individually prior to the meetings within forty hours. And I will call you and you knew everything, you read everything, you read other towns. Like the amount of effort that you put in doing what you thought was always the right thing and the best thing for the town. The, um, it's, you are a lost of a town. But thank you for always your support.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Best of luck to all. It's time for me to go and wish you all the best and continue to work.
Thank you again.
Hope we see you sitting back here one day.
Yeah.
Good. Okay, one item we should discuss though is road cut permits. Those need to be signed.
Uh huh. So we need to appoint a signatory?
Yes.
And you're looking in my direction.
Yes.
That is fine.
Would you take that on? Okay, do we need to take a vote on that?
I would take a vote, but all I want to do is I just want to disclose to the public that it's not on the agenda, but this is an emergency act because nobody could have known it happened today. Anthony was the road cut signatory permit person. And we are in the highest time of the year that we will open roads, so it is time sensitive and it has to be done.
Yeah, I think everyone needs to understand this was unexpected, so we're doing the best we can under an unexpected situation. So if the meeting's a little disjointed, so be it.
Uh huh.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Jeff as the road cut permit clerk. Is that the official?
Hmm, I just wrote up permit.
Signatory?
Signatory.
There we go.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is to vote to approve the mutual aid agreement between East Bridgewater and West Bridgewater for the town's building, electrical, and I skipped one. See, I told you, not quite ready. I will go back. Ratify collective bargaining agreement for the clerical union.
Yep, so, um, so the MOU is before you. We were just in collective, we were just in executive session where you, um, so I'll ask you to ratify it. Before I ask you to take that vote, there's one thing I do want to say is that the clerical union is going to receive raises that is consistent with all the other unions that are out there in town. And I didn't get to say this at the last time we ratified all the union agreements, because I want to do it once and do it at the same time. But I want to say thank you to all of our unions. All of our unions were very honest and fair. They all received raises. We provide additional wage increases to everybody in all of the unions. We were able to add a couple of extra little perks for all of them as well. But we did it in a way that was extremely cost effective, so it didn't overburn in the town. And also to our department heads, our chiefs, our DPW director, and also to Lynda's HR director. Everybody collectively, the union employees and management, everybody did an excellent job working together. We're very fortunate with the people we have working in this town on both sides. Not every town is that fortunate. And I just want to say thank you to all of them. And thank you to this board, because you have always shown a lot of support for all of your employees.
Oh, please extend our gratitude as well. Is there a motion to ratify the collective bargaining?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Okay, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote to approve the mutual aid agreement between East Bridgewater and West Bridgewater for the town's building, electrical, and plumbing inspectors. David, could you just give us a summary on that?
Yep, so this is a three-year agreement. It is a renewal of what we've done for multiple terms in the past. Basically, this allows West Bridgewater for whenever it is that our inspectors are on vacation or unavailable, is that we can rely on another town. They can do backfill and vice versa as well at no cost. And we also have the exact same agreement with Bridgewater. So all three Bridwaters really collectively help each other. All we're doing is memorializing a three-year agreement, what we've done in the past.
Any questions?
No, make a motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote on fiscal year twenty-four appointments to boards committees approved by the Board of Selectmen, and we've attached a list. Most of these are one-year terms. There are, I think, a handful that might be three-year terms.
Yeah, so, um, what I would ask you to do is I just, I want to scroll to the Conservation Commission. Uh, oh.
She's not on.
So she's not on here. So we'll have to put that on the next agenda, but I thought she was up there. All right. Um, so the reason I asked about conservation is we'll place on the next agenda, but you have a appointment that you made a handful of years ago, and she has not been responsive or showing up to the meetings. You have a Board of Selectmen policy that requires seventy-five percent attendance, or you can remove them. So we will remove that person at that time. That's what this letter refers to. In reference to the appointments, is there any on here that is specific to Anthony being appointed to anything?
There are.
There are. So we'll have to address those. And, uh, you know, we're going to get to it shortly, but the DPW director will be retiring closer to the end of the year. However, what I would respectfully ask of the board is that we reappoint him in the three positions that he is currently on in here, and then when we hire whoever that new person is, then we can make that new appointment. And I've spoken to the DPW director. He understands that he believes that that's the right course of action.
Okay.
Okay, so we'd be looking for a motion to approve the appointments?
Yeah, which ones is it?
Anthony's on the mobile home, the Vic Flaherty.
All right, well, the mobile home rent control, yes, okay, yes. All right, yes. So the Vic Flaherty one is always the sitting chair. So whoever we expect to be chair in the spring of next year, that would be on that committee. And then the mobile home committee, yes, that's correct. We would have to be somebody different as well. That does not have to be a selectman. To Anthony's credit, that board could not meet for many years, like a handful, I'd say half a year to three quarters of a year, because nobody else was willing to join the board. We didn't, couldn't have a quorum. And those residents were upset. They were looking for representation. And so to Anthony's credit, even though as you know how busy are selectmen, he volunteered to sit on that committee at that time, so he had a working committee. But that is not a requirement that it has to be a Board of Selectmen. So if you don't want, you can, neither one of you can do it or want to do it, we can keep that vacant and we can just add that to the posting for whatever vacancies we have, and hopefully somebody would come in for that one. On the Vic Flaherty senior one, that is a select person, and so it would be one of the two of you.
Okay, so could we just postpone those appointments, or do they need to be made tonight?
The Vic Flaherty one certainly doesn't have to be made tonight. And the same thing with rent control. I would add it to our posting and I would skip that one.
Okay, so?
As it does not have to be done.
So then I, I think what we should do is approve the other motions, I mean, sorry, the other appointments. And let's just postpone the other appointments until our next meeting. So we have a chance to digest all of this and think about it. We don't need to post it yet, do we?
We do not.
So let's just postpone it.
Okay.
Rather than rush to make a decision tonight and...
So I think the cleanest motion would be to accept all appointments as presented, exclusive of the one thirty-first of Mr. Cunningham. The Anthony Cunningham.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Some vote? I'm second, sorry. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, vote to award contract for AC installation at Town Hall to Mian Mechanical HVAC.
Yeah, so I'm going to ask the selectmen for approval on this. Um, uh, in, um, town meeting of twenty-twenty-two, we used a quote that was a little out of date, but we used a quote. We went to town meeting, secured money to add AC units, and immediately the pricing already went up again. We did not install AC units last summer because we rolled the dice and we assumed, like most people, that real estate would come down, that other pricing would come down. I mean, we all knew inflation was rampant. And so there's not a person out there twelve months ago that would have thought that everything would continue to escalate in price. And unfortunately, it didn't. In the meantime, we have way too many of our employees, especially in the first floor, that legitimately don't have AC. And we just can't go another summer without it. So we've done our best. We received multiple quotes. This is the organization that installed all of these AC units, and they've done a very good job. They are willing to start next week. And so I would ask for your support on this. We will go over budget on it. We will be doing end-of-year transfers for FY twenty-three at your next meeting. And what we will do is we'll just transfer money from some other account to make up the difference.
Have, has any policy been put into place so that in the future a current quote is being used?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So Lynda and I did discuss the fact that moving forward is that as part of our capital budget packet, it is going to require quotes to be no older than ninety days.
So that's the, the one part I like about this is it was unexpected and I don't think it needed to be unexpected. Is there a motion or any questions, Jeff?
I have no questions. I'll make the motion.
Okay, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Award installation of pickleball courts to Ramco Inc.
Sure, I can do this. So the recreational space committee obviously has met probably over the last three or four years, numerous times, present, uh, special town meeting last fall. At that special town meeting, there was an article approved for three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to build, uh, pickleball courts by the Council on Aging, to build a basketball court at the Howard School, and a, uh, an additional tennis court and a new, in a basketball court at the high school. We worked with a company, CHA, who brought us through the whole process. And that was the estimate that we received from them, much as what David has discussed about nothing being priced quite the same as, uh, as time moves forward here. That project went out for bid, and we came back. There were three people, three bidders. We had one bid at a one million forty-eight thousand dollars. We had another bid at, um, eight hundred and seventy-three, four hundred and twenty dollars. And the low bid was for six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, which was from Ramco. All of those bids for the entire project severely exceeded the amount of money we had approved for town. We got some legal advice, uh, Town Council, and confirmed that we could move forward with, um, all the, all the bids themselves were broken out by project as well. The committee met yesterday and unanimously agreed that if we're going to move forward with one project right now, it should be the pickleball courts. As the town has tennis courts right now, and they do have a basketball court, albeit maybe not in the best shape. But, um, Floyd from town is the pickleball court, and that seems to have the highest interest right now in town. So the pickleball, uh, Ramco was the lowest bidder for the pickleball court, and that bid was two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So again, it was a unanimous choice last night for the recreational space committee to, uh, to move forward or to bring to us, uh, bring to the Board of Selectmen to move forward the pickleball court at two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. There was discussion about, uh, there is, there was, we talked about pairing, uh, the Howard Basketball Court with that because it would come in under budget. But there's a concern at this point, is that school building committee, as you're aware, is starting, and there's a chance that stuff could be shifted around there. We didn't want to spend fifty thousand dollars this year to rip it up in a year or two. So there was some interest to see if that money was enough to build a basketball court behind the high school. But at this point, um, the committee wants to move forward with the pickleball courts, and we have time to, uh, to research the, that part of that project. So the motion for tonight would be to award Ramco for two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the building of the pickleball courts behind, or in front of, I guess, what do you want to say, Council on Aging. So, there's a discussion.
Do you have any questions?
So, well, that's it.
So I will take that as a motion. I'll second it.
Aye.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye. So we need to take a vote to accept Chris Iannatelli's retirement as DPW director. Here is another disappointment.
Can we vote no?
I think we're happy he's retiring and, and he's had a great career here. And Chris has been a, a great director. Uh, happy to see him move on to, uh, hopefully more fun in life. But it'll be tough shoes to fill.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's clear to everybody listening that his effective retirement date will be November eighth. So it's not effective tonight. But we, we place it on this agenda as opposed to waiting till November, because obviously we have to take the next steps to replace him. And I think in any good management, we want to make sure if we could hire someone, that there is some overlap. So that way, whoever it is, uh, that, whoever that person is, is that they can work hand in hand with each other. But if you don't mind me saying, um, it is another, it is a sad night for multiple reasons. Chris is just, Chris is really a good person. And he works hard. He has done administratively a fantastic job. We, we've got a lot of sidewalks done, a lot of projects done, a lot of grants done. Wall Memorial Park always looks fantastic. So he, um, he, you know, thirty-two years, so good for him. It's a long time. But, uh, he has been a pleasure to work with, and I personally will miss him.
I think the ending of Chris's letter truly depicts his spirit. That he says, "My goal has always been to keep West Bridgewater beautiful. I have truly enjoyed my job." And if you know Chris, that's a hundred percent sincere. And I think it is important that we do expedite as much as possible, reasonable, to get someone in because he has a vast, vast responsibilities in management. So to have that overlap is important. Was there a vote to accept Chris Iannatelli's retirement as DPW director?
I'll make that, I'll make that motion with regret.
Okay, I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Would you please send him a letter of gratitude from the board and the town? Okay, next on the agenda is vote to approve job description for DPW director.
So this job description follows the format that we've been doing and is consistent with the hiring policy of the Board of Selectmen. So what we will do is we will post for this based on the job description that you approved tonight with the salary range. And then we, as staff, we will then post, interview, and then sometime after, like early in the midfall, is that we will then bring the, what we believe is the best candidate to the board for you to meet and ratify at that point. The job description is mainly very similar to what it was a handful of years ago. We made some changes to it just to update for technology reasons. I want to make sure that the person not only stays, has technology skills today, but there is now a new requirement that as technology changes in the future, that that person must change as technology changes. That way they don't get out of date. And it is a condition of their employment. I did work on this last week, and when I worked on it, I worked on it with, with the chair at that point. And so in consultation with the chair, he felt that a hundred and thirty thousand dollar a year job that a college degree should be required. He would like to see it have a civic, a civil engineer. My feeling is it needs to be at least a college degree. A civil engineer would be ideal. But I wouldn't want to just pigeonhole it in case it's a similar or, you know, somewhat similar degree. But, you know, Anthony did feel very strongly that we should be looking at people with, with some type of degrees when we pay that type of money. And, um, and so I have reflected that in the job description. But ultimately, it is your, you have to agree to what is that we post. That's part of the policy. And then also, though we discuss it in executive session, is that you will then also direct us as to what the salary range is. And armed with that, we will then begin our postings. We will, we will then post it.
So I think it's important that the person have a, a formal education, at least a bachelor's degree. I think that just focusing on civil engineering may limit or eliminate people from applying. Uh, and then I'm fine with the required minimum of seven to ten years of responsible administrative and supervisory experience in the field of public works. And, and the reason I feel so strongly about a degree is the world has changed. There, there's a lot of legal issues that get involved with the DPW. And someone with some, a college degree should bring along some ability to interpret statutes and look at the laws. Calling Town Council every time you have a question is very expensive. And we've been able to curb some of these legal costs by having someone with the formal education and experience. So I think that's important.
I'd be, I'd be good with changing it to bachelor's degree required, civil engineering preferred. Maybe that, that just doesn't make as tight of a box, you know, just to severely limit applications. But obviously, if, if there was a candidate with those two qualifications, it would probably be at the top of the interview list, I would assume.
Other than that, were there any other changes?
No, I just want to make sure I capture, so are you, is, are you in consensus on that, or is...
Oh, I'm in agreement with that.
So I want to make sure I capture the language correctly. So what it would be is a bachelor's degree required, a civil engineering preferred. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, bachelor's degree required, in civil engineering prefer, comma, in civil engineering preferred, and also required. Minimum of, goes into the sentence.
Oh, the other, okay, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
The seven or ten years, yeah.
Okay.
I just wanted to check, capture that correctly. And then the other is, is that, um, if you could just, um, formally direct us as to what you want the salary range to be.
One twenty-five to one thirty?
Right, and we pay them just in standby stipends, so we will maintain that.
Of five thousand dollars, that would be maintained. So do we need a motion to approve the job description as we just?
Please.
Okay, do you want to make a motion, Jeff?
Yeah, sure. I'd like to make a motion that we approve your job description with the changes to, uh, to the, uh, the bachelor's degree and also, uh, the post of the, uh, the salary.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Site plan review, zoning board of appeals, special permit to United Drive Office and Warehouse.
Yeah, so first I want to make sure that there was a scrutiny error on both of these. So on this initial site plan review and the next one, they had both got to be reviewed by the planning board, not the zoning board of appeals. This is for thirteen thousand square foot warehouse to be built. It is currently vacant property. Uh, it would be thirteen thousand square foot warehouse to be built, uh, to United Drive, which is basically as you enter United Drive on the left-hand side. It is by right according to our zoning. And it is only because it is in the water resource district area that it requires site plan review by the planning board. Uh, in reviewing it, I didn't really see, it, it, that's where it belongs.
Uh huh.
So, um, so I didn't see any real objections to it.
No, I watched the Conservation Commission meeting on this.
And was that?
No, it was good. It sounded like there was, it sounded like in, in general, there was, there was some swapping of some, uh, conservation land for this, but they were in agreement and everything. This was sort of, I think, I think the original intention of this project was a much bigger, uh, much bigger building, um, where things might have been tight. I think, I can't call it the size, but probably double, triple. And where they're coming back to the size, it was, it made that piece of property much more manageable. My interpretation for the Conservation Commission.
So normally, yeah.
Yep.
Normally what we... Is it, is it Ockers? Uh...
Yeah.
So normally what we would do is make recommendations at this point, and if we have any. But first of all, it's allowed by right. It's industrial. It's going to create more traffic, but again, allowed by right, and it's a de, industrial.
Uh huh.
So we certainly can't take away someone's rights from them because they're going to create more traffic. So as far as, a, a, again, they're in the industrial zone and they're subject to every other board's review during this process.
Right.
So I don't have any recommendations.
So when the pass when that's occurred, you, which is vote, that state that you have no objections to the project, and that's where we pass along.
Is there a motion?
Make that motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, the second one is again, excuse me, it's going to be site plan review before the planning board. It's on one sixty-eight South Main Street. This is the Hardy Building. Uh, all they're looking to do is add a detached garage of twelve hundred square feet to the rear of their building, um, so that way they can store accessories required as part of their, um, is, is part of their, their, uh, what they do for the stock and trade. It is classified to be in the business zone because the first five hundred feet of one oh six is. So it's a legal building. It's a legal use. Uh, there is some mixed use on that road. If you're staring at the building, you'll notice on the left-hand side is commercial, the tax center, and on the right-hand side it is residential. But again, it's just a garage. It's for storage. I really don't see any real concerns. The building inspector did include some of his concerns to make sure that there's screening and in that...
The lighting, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Um, but those are usually minimalistic in nature and certainly make sense. Uh, but other than that, there's no other real objections to it.
No, I like to, I like to just point some, you know, the lighting and not having it spill into the neighbors.
Right, that's, that's important. Is this going to have any additional parking as well, or is it just for storage?
My understanding is just for...
Any questions, comments?
No, I think, same, same motion.
Do we want to just include, uh, a recommendation for lighting to be downward facing, not to...
You can't. I think the building inspector did that.
Okay.
But if you want to do it, it's your comments, or if you want to just say that you echo the building inspector's comments, whatever you prefer.
Yeah, I think we can, I'm comfortable just saying we echo the building inspector's comments on this.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approve me, the meeting minutes of May seventeen?
Make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Accept the meeting minutes of June seventh, twenty twenty-three for review?
Make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Communications and reports from board... Communications and reports from boards, commissions, and town officials. Need to ratify Anne, well, David, could you, we have A and B, ratify Anne Williams' non-union personal contract. Followed by vote to accept Anne Williams' retirement as principal assessor. So rather than, we'll vote on them separate, but if you could just elaborate.
Um, but the truth of the matter is, is that Anne Williams being the principal assessor, um, she did, she initially was going to do another one-year appointment term. Um, she did sign a contract with the assessors, and I think it was in June. But she signed a one-year contract in June, um, and then shortly thereafter, she decided she wanted to retire. So the assessors already signed it, it's part of the bylaw change the town meeting made, it, it appoints you to ratify all contracts. So in essence, she's on a contract for five weeks. Um, but I don't think that we can just go backwards now and say, hey, you've now decided to retire, we're gonna tear up the contract. Cause the assessors are the legal appointing authority, they did sign it, I think we have to honor it. So what I would ask is, is if you ratify her personal contract, and then you also vote to accept her retirement, which I believe is effective on this day.
Okay. Making motions one at a time?
Yes.
Make the first motion to uh ratify Anne Williams' contract.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to accept uh Anne Williams' retirement. As principal assessor.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Please send her a letter of thanks from our board. Vote to accept Caitlin Smith's resignation as patron services assistant.
So, uh, Caitlin, um, yes, you, yeah, so she, she, um, she is only been with this for about a year.
Not even, not a few, three months.
Um, but three, four months. But, uh, but she works at the library. Um, I can tell you that the feedback on it was very positive. However, they did decide to make a life-changing event in Hokey, Texas. Uh, she said it was gonna be a long commute. Um, and so, um, so she said that she was gonna have to resign, so, um, you know, it's one of those things. So she'll resign, she will move, um, and then the H I R director is in the process of, uh, with the library staff. And director of, of looking for replacement.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Sure, I'd like to make the motion to accept Caitlin Smith's resignation.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote to accept Ashley McCucci. Say that correct?
Yeah, so, um, so Ashley joined us a little over six months ago. She is the secondary person in, well, they say secondary, cause Carolyn Adams has been there for so long. But we had put her in for inspectional services. Ashley did a really nice job. Um, she has young children, she's unable to continue working full-time, so on, so she has decided to resign. Um, I did provide a memo to each one of you individually, that because the department is busy, it is summertime. We're in the process of looking for a full-time person, is that she is going to stay on as a ten ninety-nine non-employee. Um, and, and so therefore more as an individual or independent agent. She worked about fifteen hours a week, just so that we have coverage in the office. Um, and we're actively in the, in the process of replacing her. We did have a conversation with the union, um, and the union is okay with it. So at this point, I'm just asking you to accept her resignation.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote to appoint Stacy Driscoll as West Bridgewater representative to the board of directors of Old Colony Planning Council.
So again, this letter came in, and the, it was, it was poorly, it was, it was incorrectly written. It is actually the O C P C advisory committee. So there is a board of directors, of which right now former selectman Eldon Rivera sits on, that is the umbrella for all O C P C boards and committees. And they have a lot. Um, and so, and one of the they have is an advisory committee to council on aging. To all the council of aging, um, um, facilities throughout the region. The last person that was on there was Pat Sherman. She was from the council of aging, she resigned or, or left because she moved back town. But she resigned right in the middle of COVID. There wasn't a lot of meetings. They're now getting back up and running. It's important for us to have representation on there. Stacy is the new shine counselor. I can tell you from talking to the C O A director, she's very happy with, with Stacy and is doing a nice job. And so they are, the C O A board, uh, with your approval, will let to appoint her to the O C P C advisory committee.
Make that motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Correspondence from the public to determine a course of action. I don't believe we have any correspondence. Okay, public comment period. We have a public here tonight. Any comments? No.
I did have a, a quick one, I believe. I got a letter from the selectman about a reappointment to a conservation. And I might have got sworn in, but she didn't have a letter, so she called the office, and I didn't see it up there.
So the letter that went out stated that at this meeting, they would be voting on reappointments. And to notify us by July third if you are not interested. So you were supposed to get a point, sworn in after July twelfth, which is tonight.
Oh.
Right, but they had to make the, that's why you don't have a letter, because they hadn't made the vote yet. And we were trying to be proactive, cause what happens is a lot of times that we make an appointment. And then somebody comes back and they say, I don't wanna really be reappointed. So it was a proactive letter, let you know that you, it was anticipated, I think was the language. It's anticipated that you're going to be appointed. So, I guess as you, we'll probably get a new one.
But I what?
You're gonna get a new one, saying that you've been formally appointed.
But I, do I have to swear in again?
No, that's, that's up to you, so I doubt it.
Thank you, Lomo.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, and for being efficient. Any other comments? No? Okay, town administrators report.
Yeah, so thank you. So I just wanna let you know, you know, every once in a while, you do something and it works out really, really well. So more than a handful of years ago, we voted, this board did, to aggregate our electricity, and there were some people that were against it, and I totally understand why. But, um, but this year, when national grid rates jumped by so much, these numbers are extremely impressive. So you can see in the blue, in Q one twenty twenty-two, our residents saved a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. In Q two, sixty, uh, what's that, fifty-two or sixty-two and forty-eight. But look at the last two quarters. I mean, that's literally, our residents saved two million dollars in aggregate. By doing the municipal aggregation choice versus just doing the national grid rate. Again, they still get national grid electricity delivered to the, all through their lines. It's supplied by to somebody else, but it's through the lines. They still call grid if it's an issue or a problem. They literally have to do nothing. Um, but that means that over the course, over this past year, our residents literally saved about two and a half million dollars. And, and so again, I wanted to give this board a lot of credit, because we always talk about having an attempt, how do we save them on the tax rolls? And it's hard, because budgets have to be paid, people have to get paid, insurance costs go up, all those things. But we found a unique way to be able to find a way to save the money. And so I think that residents should know that previous boards and current, the current board, that you guys champion this, and it's worked out very, very well. Again, anybody who is not on it and would like to sign up for it, if they go to our webpage, or the board of selectmen, left-hand side will say community choice. They click on it, it literally takes about one minute to sign on, and if they're delayed a date, they wanna get off of it, they can do the exact same thing.
People moving into town, are they automatically enrolled, not enrolled?
They're not automatically enrolled, but they will automatically receive a card. Yeah, you get them at church.
Okay.
So I'll be the first to admit, um, I was wrong several years ago. I did not like this at all, but it was mainly because you were forced into it. You had to opt out. I didn't like that, but everyone's efforts and your efforts, especially David. Into implementing this and maintaining it and the negotiations, I was wrong. I still don't like the, you know, force me to opt into something, that part, but the value that it brought to the residents, it's phenomenal.
I'll go the other way. If I wasn't forced into it, I probably wouldn't be on it. I've been on it all along, and I've saved some money, so.
So we, we were within, we just had to opt out, but.
So it, that, it's a D P U regulation, because when we initiate the program, the vendor has to go to the market. And has to say, I wanna buy X amount of kilowatts in order to drive the price down. So if everybody had to opt in, it would be impossible for them to know how many kilowatts to purchase.
I fully, uh, conscious of this.
Correct, and therefore by not being able to have that number guaranteed, the, the pricing wouldn't be as advantageous. So that's why D P W did, D P U did it. Um, it, but I fully understand the thought process as to why it would frustrate people. But I also understood the administrative purpose of it and why the need is there. Um, second is, is, oop, sorry, did I?
I just said, good job.
Thank you. Um, second of all is, is that I'm just looking for a formal vote. We have always done this for, um, town projects. And or, uh, volunteer organizations in town, so we always waive fees. So I didn't phone the building inspector. That we would be waiving the fees for the pickleball courts, because that's always been the past practice. However, in the end, it really is the board that controls the fees, so I am looking for a formal vote to waive any fees. Makes no sense for the town to pay a fee to itself.
Make that motion.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, last is, is complete streets. Again, going back to really good work that Chris has done, is that Chris applied for this complete streets project last year. And he was awarded five hundred thousand dollars. So most of that is going to go into sidewalks moving forward. Part of that, however, does come with the caveat that we have to, um, have a bike lane on North Elm Street. And also some bike, um, uh, bike signs, so no one knew it was gonna be forty-one bike signs. Um, but that's what the state is requiring. Uh, there's a little known law that was passed at the end of, um, uh, Governor Baker's tenure. That you now have to move all of footbikes, or you can get ticketed, and you have to allow, I think it's five feet or six feet. The person who sponsored it, the state senator, has voluntarily admitted, he doesn't know exactly how it gets enforced. Um, cause it's gonna be difficult, right, and how you could enforce it. However. Um, D O T has been, um, tasked as part of that legislation. To make sure that there is an educational campaign to all residents, so that's what these bike li- bike signs are for. Is to inform people that it is the law to move all of footbike traffic. So, we'll have some more bike signs in, we'll have a bike path, but receiving five hundred thousand dollars, so we can continue doing sidewalks. That's a lot of money.
Yes.
And, um, and it was something I, I really wanna give, yeah, Chris deserves a lot of credit. It was a lot of work on his part. Um, and again, the town will benefit from it.
Uh, just a, maybe a question you might know the answer to, or you could find out. There's, there's another program called Safe Roots to Schools, that also provides grant money for sidewalks. Um, and bike lanes, and I, I forget what else, but it's, I think, I'm not sure if it's, I think it's separate from complete streets. But I think it, the way it gets processed, eventually Chris would be aware of it. Uh, do you know if the town applied? Well, not the town, not sure if it comes from the school, I think it comes from the school, maybe? Do you know if the schools applied for safe routes, uh, to school funds?
They have not applied, and if they have, then I'm just unaware of it, but to my knowledge, and I feel pretty confident in the state, that they have not applied. They have looked at it numerous times.
Okay.
However, it is always tied to the amount of children that you have that live within a distance to the school, and there is a couple of little nuances of it. That make us not able to qualify.
Wow.
And so as a result, the, um, the school has not applied because they know they're not a candidate.
Okay, well, that's unfortunate. Okay, once there's any other questions or business, I would recommend that we adjourn open session. And go into executive session. Read this, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session, not to return to open session. For purposes of conducting a strategy session for negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the police chief. And this would be a rule call vote, so you would make a motion and then.
Make that motion.
Okay, I would second rule call vote.
Ryan, yes.
Raise yes. We are now entering into executive session, will not return into open session.